Board of Education, this is October 11th, time is 7:03. And call the meeting to order. And Ms. Greer, can you please call the roll?
Harper.
Here.
Alvin.
Here.
Good friend.
Here.
Oda.
Here.
Klein. Lundkins. Smith.
Present.
NIC trustee Lundkins there as well. We are currently under a state of emergency declared by the Oak Park City Council, and that's why we have several board members that are joining remotely tonight. I'm going to ask each one to state their city and state where they're located for the record in accordance with the open meetings app. And we'll start with Mr. Alvin. Can you please state your location?
Oak Park, Michigan.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Oak Park, Michigan.
And Ms. Lundkins.
Oak Park, Michigan.
All right, thank you. We move now to approval of the agenda and order of business. Or I'm sorry, we have the recitation of district's mission, goals, mission, vision, and belief statements. I'll ask if the, if there's any objection to waiving that tonight. I don't see any, so we'll move to the approval of the agenda and order of business. Are there any, do any board members have questions about the agenda and order of business? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask for unanimous consent for approval of the agenda. If there's any, if there's anyone on the board that objects to the agenda, is there any, any objection to unanimous consent? Okay, when the agenda is approved, we move to our consent agenda, which includes two items. It includes the approval of minutes and the approval of personnel actions. The minutes are from our last meeting, October 4th, 2021. Personnel actions include the addendum that was provided to each of the board members right before the meeting. Does any board member wish to remove either of those from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda stands, and I'll ask for a voice vote on the consent agenda. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The consent agenda is approved, we move to public participation. Trustee Lundkins, can you please read the public participation?
Yes. I probably write a page. Members of the audience are, are invited to participate at board meetings prior to the business portion of the meeting, following conclusion of reports, and prior to the adjournment of each meeting. You will be recognized by the board president and asked to give your name and address before making your comments. Please present a concise statement of your concerns. The board president may choose to limit your presentation to three minutes in order that all wish to speak may have the opportunity to do so. Thank you for your cooperation, welcome your input, and appreciate your presence at our meeting. If any person which, excuse me, if any person with disabilities needs special accommodations to our Board of Education meeting, please contact superintendent's office at 248-336-7705, seven days prior to the meeting date.
All right, thank you trustee Lundkins. So for those who are here in, so you're welcome to stand up at the podium to make your comment. Those who are joining us virtually tonight, you can indicate by raising your hand in the participants tab or making a comment in the chat, and I will call on you to make your statement. We do ask that all statements made during public, during public participation be in the spirit of, of public participation, which includes addressing your comments to the full board, understanding that the board and the administration do not respond to comments made during public participation. And so if you have specific questions that you'd like answered, you can do that by contacting building administrators or central office. And also, we ask, of course, that those who address the board, keep their comments productive and, and we will not tolerate any comments that are intemperate, abusive, defamatory, or discourteous, or that otherwise interferes with the orderly conduct and timely composition of the board meeting. We hold the, this is a meeting of the board that is held in public, and we value the input of our community. And that's why it's important that we continue to make sure that all comments are made in that spirit of working together for the interests of our students. Mr. Adomision.
Evening all, Michael Adomision, 35535 Richmond Street, Livonia, 48150. It's good to see you this evening in person, no less. After some back and forth with members of the community, members of the administration, and members of the school board in the last week, I thought long on what I wanted to say tonight. I'd like to first thank the several other locals from around Oak Park in showing their support outside with us. Earlier today, we received a lengthy email reiterating a statement that was made to the board last week, and there's a thing that I'd like to address.
Yeah.
The board's bargaining team has not used the term frozen. You're right. You have not expressly used the term frozen in an official communication or offer. However, your offer unequivocally states that will be no step or financial increase for this wage reopener. I don't want to get into a semantic debate here, but to me and to everybody affected, no step or financial increase is functionally freezing our salaries. I know that claim has been made, that we also received a pay increase already this year, that being the other half of our step from last year. My rate of pay, contractual rate when prorated last year, is identical to this year. The number changed on my paycheck, but it was after the contract was ratified last year. A blended number had to be created so that the software could cut checks in the correct amount. My base salary is effectively identical to what it was in January. The main point of contention, however, between the OPEA's bargaining team and the district in this wage reopener rests on the granting of steps, and if granted, how they're paid for. Your claim that it would bankrupt the district in two years, you claim that it would bankrupt the district in two years. I need to tease that claim out a bit to understand where the disagreement comes from. It assumes two huge contradictory things. One, that student count will continue at the present depressed levels. And two, you will continue staffing at the current inflated levels. I'm not advocating for layoffs, but assuming current staffing in the next year by the district is being intellectually dishonest, especially with financial responsibility claims that are made in the sense of not freezing our salaries. I understand the reticence to offer steps in a time of severely depressed enrollment. One might ask how you've assumed that after losing 700 kids from 2019 to 2020, that a conservative estimate of enrollment was a net 200 students from the year previous to this year, but I digress. If it were only the general money, general fund that you were pulling money from, I might agree with you. But we got ESER this year, and Board President Hoida and Dr. Hitchcock have said a few times that it's illegal to use ESER money to pay for permanent wages. You've gone so far as to send out documentation from the MDE that after a close read says nothing of the kind. I've asked MEA Legislative Affairs Bargaining and Legal to review these claims. This morning, I received exactly what I expected from the MEA, and noticed that the claims made by the district were not, in fact, based in law. If you are in possession of a document, legal opinion, or the like that unequivocally says that ESER can't be used to pay for salary or to continue staffing at present levels, please produce it, because the MEA cannot find such a document.
Thank you, Mr. Adomision. I'm going to ask the next person, please.
All right, hello. My name is Laura Nauman, and I reside at 4014 Griffith, Berkeley, Michigan. I'm currently in my seventh year teaching and seventh year at Oak Park Schools. I was hired the summer after my student teaching year in August 2015. My sole teaching experience has been with Oak Park. Like a lot of new teachers, I struggled my first year. I thought the solution to my problem was to leave Oak Park, but I always thought if I don't support, love, and teach the students of Oak Park, who will? I stuck it out for my students, and until this year was very happy at Oak Park. As most fresh graduates, I was hired in at step one. I received my master's in 2018, which I paid for out of pocket, which if you're unaware, in the state of Michigan, is required, without saying required, in order to get pay you deserve and the certification renewal. I'm here to address a misconception going around, both on social media and during these meetings, that Oak Park has one of the highest pay scales in Oakland County. While this may be true for new hires and people high up on the scale, I can personally tell you it is not for a seventh year teacher with a master's. You see, when the new contract was ratified last January, our step shifted. Instead of being placed on step six, I was placed at our new step three. This was not an issue for me at the time, because the salaries were equivalent. What this does cause confusion about is comparing teachers' pay. I'm currently in my seventh year at Oak Park, and then I'm step three, should be on step four. So when comparing salaries where a step normally equates to years in the district, you must be careful. Step seven on Oak Park's scale and step seven on Birmingham's scale do not represent the same teacher. I rounded all the following values down to the nearest hundredth, just for ease. Let's pretend I received my deserved step in September. I would still make $4,200 less than a Southfield teacher, $200 less than a Ferndale teacher, $9,900 less than a Birmingham teacher, and $4,100 less than a Royal Oak teacher. Now that's with the step I have not yet received. The difference between step three and step four is $4,100. So add about $4,100 to each of those amounts, and that is how much I am currently making less than my Oakland County counterparts. For comparison, I currently on average make $8,700 less than the four Oakland County counterparts I have described here. I wholeheartedly support new teachers and veteran teachers receiving a competitive salary. However, there needs to be something like for me to stay in the district. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the community members and the OPEA members for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Haichu.
Good evening, good evening, Ms. Haichu, Mrs. Haichu from 31340 Pagels Drive, Warren, Michigan, 48092. I am a teacher and a parent in this district. I wanted to say, if you are in possession of a document, legal opinion, or the like that unequivocally states that ESER can't be used for salary, by all means, share it, as it's something that hasn't been provided nor even seen by the MEA. Suffice it to say, the MEA is confident wages, including steps, can be paid for directly out of the ESER funds, 10.7 million. Dr. Hitchcock says in her own email that they're currently doing it to avoid layoffs. It has been and shall continue be, continue to be our position that the steps can and should be paid out of the ESER funds for this year. At the end of the day, we're still coming to work every day, still working our tails off with our students every day, still working in good faith to try to address other significant shortfalls in staffing and workload. We just signed a letter of agreement created to address the serious lack of special education staff to make sure those tasked with working on another's caseload would be fairly compensated and work would be shared equitably. Anything said to the contrary is not indicative of the work ethic of the OPEA as a whole. We want nothing more than to see this discussion get wrapped up. However, there is a means to do so that the district simply seems unable or unwilling to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We now move. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Monica Tienda, 1012 Cloverdale Drive, Royal Oak, Michigan. I have been at Key since 1999, and I made a picture. And sometimes with our students, we do what's called a numberless graph, and we ask them to notice and wonder. So before we start doing anything with the data, we get, we try to get them to understand what exactly is going on. So what do I notice? I notice on this graph of years of experience and salary pay, there's a lot of years. This is a teacher that's been here for a long time, 22 years, in fact. I noticed that for the first few years of her tenureship here in the district, the pay scale went up. Because according to our salary contract, it was actually more beneficial to be a teacher who had been in the district longer. It was incentivized to stay in the district longer, because your pay would go up per step, per year. I also notice that the graph doesn't continue to go up. There's actually quite a tank, about a $4,000 tank, happening in 2010, when we were required not only to lose salary in terms of dollars, but lose a step in terms of experience to try to salvage the district. And I also noticed that in the many subsequent years after that, and ten years of a president and a half, it's flat. Plateaued, stagnant, year after year after year. And I wonder, how many years is that? Too many. I noticed that it's slowly creeping up. I noticed that at the very end of the graph, which would coincide with the current time, it's only now reaching the point that it was in 2010. And I wonder how many dollars were lost? I wonder how many teachers, even though this graph has no numbers, how many other teachers have graphs that look the same? I wonder how many dollars were lost over time? I wonder how many teachers are not on the same step, and were not lucky enough to get what I got? Because the majority of us here in the district are not the new hires that hired in at 74,000. We hired in at 33,000. And even if you equate that over time and inflation, it doesn't balance out.
Thank you, Ms. Tienda. Mr. Boyer.
December 12th, 2008, 5th Hour Psychology, Oak Park High School Auditorium. I'm in my psychology elective, and Reggie, not his real name, he's tugging at my shirt. He says, "Mr. Boyer, I have asthma. I think I'm smelling smoke." I go, "Reg, no, I don't smell it. I don't smell the smoke." And the students are involved, they're doing social distancing a full decade before COVID, and they're also getting in touch with social emotional learning. And they're doing their journals, and they're preoccupied, and I'm trying to finish the class in this unique opportunity to have students express themselves. I asked the board and anyone in the audience, if they're able to, to look up in the balcony in the last row, the seats that are closest to the ceiling. Reg starts tugging at my arm again and says, "Mr. Boyer, I see it. I see the smoke." And sure enough, there's a trail of smoke in the last row. And I'm thinking, okay, somebody might be smoking. They shouldn't be doing that. Class wait here, and I run upstairs. Back then, I was a marathon runner, and I ran as fast as I could, and I got up, and there's, there's a lot going on. There's a student shoving papers underneath the chair, and there's quite a fire that's engulfed the chair, and it's spreading to the ceiling. Had the ceiling continued to burn, the roof would have caught on fire, and Oak Park High would have been shut down for 2008. Now, I know we've come a long way. We've come a long way. That was a different board. That was a different superintendent. And I know we don't want to go back to that. That time in the Great Recession, when teachers took a pay freeze for years after taking a pay cut. And I bring this story up because this is an example of what teachers do every day. All the teachers up here, in this room, and on Zoom and beyond, what they do every day as professionals, and what they're called upon to do, and sometimes they have to go beyond to what they're called upon to do. And all we're asking is to get the respect and support we deserve, because we don't want to go back to how it was 13 years ago. I know nobody in this room does. So maybe it's time we cooperate and give teachers their due, their minimum modest step, so we can move forward and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. And we move now to our next agenda item, which is our first action item, and that is approval of the Lessinger Early Childhood HVAC renovations. I'll ask Mr. Alvin, can you read the motion, please? Mr. Alvin? Okay.
Try to pull it up. You may want to get someone else to read it.
Okay. Mr. Klein? I'm sorry, you know, before that, I didn't notice before that Mr. Hartzig had his hand up, so I'm going to allow him to give his comment before we move forward. Mr. Hartzig?
Hi, Brian Hartzig, 11515 Maple Creek Court, Washington, Michigan. Okay, so we compare ourselves to many districts when wanted to be compared by administration, et cetera. I've heard all the conversations, pulled Farmington's contract. I am making $6,000 less than where I would be in Farmington. Today, we received an email that talked about giving incentives for new teachers, giving them all their years of service, et cetera, et cetera. 22 years in the district, much like Monica, I am still on step 10. I am wondering, if I resign and reapply for my job, will you move me to step 12? Because that's a good question, because I would be really disappointed if we're hiring people with their years of service, and they come in after someone who's been here their entire career, giving everything on themselves, their life to Oak Park, to support Oak Park. So the final thing that I look at, when I look at numbers, where's the 18 million we had three, three years ago that literally this staff padded the budget books, 18 million on our backs? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Pete has his hand up as well. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Pete Conan. I live at 13331 Rosemary Boulevard in Oak Park. I'm a science teacher at the high school, science content area lead, soccer team, the football teams, tech director for the school's drama club, sponsor the Gay Straight Alliance, and it's big green garden club. And I'm a part of a lot of committees that are geared towards school improvement. And I go to as many of the students' events as I can, just to let them know, like, the staff, we care about the students. And I don't do any of that for like, I just, I've developed a very deep connection with the student body, because two and a half years ago, my life changed. My wife passed away, and the students at Oak Park High School gave me the biggest display of love of anybody in the entire world. And at that moment, I knew Oak Park High School is a school that I'm going to retire from. The students here still are my biggest source of support, to the point where I moved a block away from the school. I walk to school most days. That being said, I've grown increasingly sad and disappointed at the entire school community, from the students all the way to the top. I think the, the school community sets the example for the community at large. And this year, we've all let the community down. So much, what I've seen from like, from everybody, just illustrates an embedded mistrust and lack of faith in each other. And that, that's going to lead to further unkindness. All of us in the district, we were hired, and we were interviewed to ramp our positions, whatever it was. We put forth the best versions of ourselves, and that's why we were hired. And so we're expected to do the best that we can. Every single day, we don't get to phone it in. And I feel like if we, if all of us were giving our best this whole time, all these issues would be resolved. And it's well known that there's a teacher shortage across the country, and I've been contacted by friends at other districts trying to lure me away since I've been here, and I keep telling them, nothing is going to pull me away from Oak Park. This is where I'm supposed to be. This is literally where my world is now. And it breaks my heart to say this, but sometimes I feel like some of us are being pushed away. Some of us don't matter. And as much as it hurts to say this, if we can't write this, I'm not sure how much stamina a bunch of us have left. I personally have high hopes for Oak Park and the people who are in service of it. But I think we all need to be our best selves in this process and resolve the issues and do it in the kindest way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conan. Javier Briggs.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Javier Briggs. I am at 20825 Washington Street, Roosevelt, Michigan. And I'll be speaking on a couple of things. For starters, I'd like to ask everybody for their attention, especially every single member on the Board of Education sitting in the chairs right now. Basically, I want to speak upon the fact that there's nothing being implemented inside the school. At the last recent board meeting, you guys said that there'll be new incentives and new rules taking place and new, whatever it's.
I'm sorry, Mr. Briggs, you seem to, are you there? We can't hear you.
Which led up to the point where the boys' bathroom in E-Wing, side of the high school, Oak Park High School, was leaking, to where it led down to the cafeteria restrooms, where the restrooms are by the front doors. Where there's leaks inside the roofs that affect every single classroom from E-Wing down to A-Wing, especially in the cafeteria as well, since majority of the rain gets inside the cafeteria and gym. There are leaks inside the roofs. Another thing, too, there has been too many lunch schedule changes to the point where it's not benefiting students. For example, for the freshmen who have A1 lunch, it's not benefiting them, since they have to eat lunch after second period, to the point where they have to bring their own snacks in from home just to make sure they stay, like, eating and hydrated throughout the day. And that doesn't benefit my little brother and his friends, since he's a freshman at Oak Park High School. It doesn't benefit them whatsoever. And for this new police thing that they have at the high school either, that's not benefiting nobody either. Could a police are steady, or steady irritating, interrogating students like me for no apparent reason based upon what we wear inside the school or outside the school? Once you step on off that school property, the police is either interrogating us or asking questions, or steady stalking us based upon a so-called fight is taking place, when no fight has recently broke out outside of school since the last police incident at the library, which was, I'm gonna say, about two weeks ago? It was like the second week of September, before the last of September? That's when the last fight outside of school took place. It's come down to a point where the police are steady interrogating students. Another thing, too, far as the police, security guards and teachers are steady still interrogating students as well. As far as like calling students out their name, disrespecting them based upon their sexuality, their religion, their looks, their home style of life. And I don't understand that. I don't see why nothing's been fixed about it, especially since you, majority of you guys be at the school every single day and don't do nothing about it. Especially the principals, Mrs. Sanders, Ms. Vermiglio, Ms. DeGrazio, Ms. Peterson, come inside classrooms and see that the teachers are acting good, but when we want to complain about something or voice our opinions, it's not voiced properly to the point where it's to be implemented. It's not just the teachers that matter, too. It's the students that matter, too. And I feel that the Board of Education that took in place of that, because ain't no way I have my little brothers coming to me about problems that should have been handled in the first place. I have a little brother at Key Elementary who's telling me that inappropriate games are taking place during their lunchtime. And I don't understand that whatsoever. He is six years old. Ain't no way inappropriate games should be taking place inside the school at all, period. Security, on the other hand, security, steady putting their hands on the.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Briggs, we're having trouble hearing you again, but I'm also going to turn now to Veronica Compton, since your time, your three minutes have expired. Veronica Compton.
Hi, my name is Veronica Compton Dupree. I live at 20461 Prairie Street in Detroit, Michigan. And I am currently a sophomore attending Oak Park High School. I would like to touch up on what Javier said about the leaks in the ceiling, because it's very bad to the point where by the bathroom area and by the cafeteria area, they'll have to use, they'll have to use trash cans that are supposed to be used for the lunch, to dispose your food for lunch. They have to use those trash cans to help stop the rain. And also, the leaks are so bad that the Chromebooks can get affected in some classrooms as well, because when it rained bad like a couple of weeks ago, my first art teacher was complaining about how the Chromebooks were wet during $6. And so she couldn't plug the, she couldn't charge them properly. So are you going to fix the roof? Or are you going to continue letting kids attend school with the leak? are you gonna continue letting kids attend school with the leaking roof all of the time? Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. We moved now to our action item agenda. And the first item on the action item agenda is approval of Lessinger Early Childhood HVAC renovations. Trustee Klein, can you read that, please?
Resolve that the Oak Park Board of Education accepts the bid for the Lessinger Early Childhood HVAC renovation to Braun Construction in the amount of one million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty dollars, zero cents. The total recommended bid costs includes the base bid of one million, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars, zero cents, plus ninety-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars, zero cents for alternate one circuit replacement. This purchase will be expended from Esser Fund. A ten percent contingency fund will need to be added. This recommendation came before the Board for information and discussion at the October fourth, two thousand twenty-one regular board meeting and comes now before the Board for approval tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Klein, supported by trustee Elvin. Are there any questions on the motion?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, um, wanted to say from the last board meeting, when I had asked for when I had asked for the, um, the spreadsheet, I was, um, referred to go to the website. But I, but what I saw on the website just was the, the letter that we had received. But I thought there would be something of a spreadsheet that gave more detail to what was actually, um, going to, um, uh, take place at Lessinger, but I didn't see that on the.
There, there is a bid tabulation there as well. There are four documents. There was two letters of recommendation, one from Partners in Architecture and the other from PMC, the bid tabulation, and then the board report.
Where, where was it? That's what I'm saying. I looked, I didn't see it. I mean, I, I got the email.
All, all those items are on this motion in Board Book.
Yes, I, I, I see them now, so.
If you look at the, and they were in last week's Board Book as well.
Right.
And they're available also for the community to review on the website in Board Book as well. Um, if you click on the document that says bid tabulation for HVAC, you'll see a spreadsheet that has each of the bidders and each of the items.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions from the board? Trustee Goodfriend?
Yes, I had a communication that I had sent, uh, to all the board members as well as our superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry. I asked after the last board meeting for a total breakdown of cost for the renovation at Lessinger School, not just the HVAC, but the entire project that's going to be done. And I still haven't seen, uh, I, and I had said I hope that would be available prior to tonight's meeting so that I could review it and study it. And to date, I still have not received it. I want everyone to know, I think Lessinger School is a very important part of this district. I made sure many years ago that it stayed open. And it did. When everybody wanted to shut it down, Lessinger remained. So Lessinger to me is a very special part of my life for all my four children. And I want to see the entire project and the costs involved. I don't think that's very difficult to do, since we're in the business to have those figures prior to us doing anything, and that's what I would like to see.
At the October fourth board meeting, you asked for a breakdown of how Lessinger was being paid for. Today, at one fifty-nine PM, you were sent an email that included a CC of all board members and Christine Jones.
Well, because I do work every day and I cannot see those things and have not been able to review it, then I have to say that I can't agree to this, uh, motion until we are available to ask questions on the entire project and be able to read it. Not at the eleventh hour, when I have to go to work to be able to make payments on my taxes that take care of the Oak Park Schools. Thank you.
Trustee Goodfriend, the information about every project that comes in front of the board is of course available to all the board members in Board Book, as well as members of the community who can access Board Book through our website. And it was included in the information that was previously approved by the board when that project was approved. So that, that information is available, but thank you for your comments. Are there any other board members that wish, that have any questions about the motion at this time?
I have a question.
Trustee, uh, corporate.
If, if those items were available to us, then why weren't those items resented to us then? If we were asking to get the breakdown of.
Is this a question on the motion?
This is a question to you, to, to the, to what, yeah, because we.
Okay, so the motion is on approval of the HVAC project.
Correct.
And, and awarding it to, to the specific contractor. Is there a question on that motion?
It is a question.
Okay, what's the question?
The question is, is can that breakdown be resent to the board members?
The breakdown was sent this afternoon. It's also available to all the board members in the information we've been previously provided. Are there any other questions from board members on the motion? Okay, now I'm gonna ask, Ms. Greerkey, please call the roll.
Smith?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Lunkins? Lunkins? You're muted.
Trustee Lunkins, you're muted. Trustee Lunkins, we'd like to record your vote. Can you please unmute yourself to let us go? Trustee Lunkins, you're still muted. You were unmuted for a moment there, and then you went back on mute.
President, is it possible for somebody to unmute her?
We, we know that the way Zoom is set up, only the person can unmute themselves. Trustee Lunkins, can you unmute yourself, please, and record your vote? Okay, I'm sorry, Trustee Lunkins, I can't, I can't hear you because you're, you're, you need to unmute yourself on your computer.
Can she do a one, can she do a one for yes?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Trustee Lunkins, what is your, what is your vote? You muted again.
Oh, wow.
Call that one for yes, two for no.
I, I don't know if we can, if we can record a vote that way. Okay, why don't we?
Alvin?
Thumbs up.
Yes.
Trustee Lunkins, you're unmuted now. Do you have, can you tell us your vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Holder.
Okay, thank you. Your vote is yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Good friend?
No.
Coprin?
No.
Hoda?
Yes. Motion. To trustee Klein vote?
Yes, pass five to two.
All right, so motion passes, and we move to our information items. And our, uh, I'm sorry, actually, to our, to our next action item, which is a motion. This is a motion that the Oak Park Board meet in closed session after the information items for the purpose of section eight C of the Open Meetings Act, which is strategy discussion regarding negotiations.
Second.
So, so moved.
Moved by myself, supported by trustee Klein. Are there any questions in the motion?
I'm gonna do a consent.
Okay, Ms. Greerkey, please call the roll.
Alvin?
Yes.
Lunkins?
Yes.
Hoda?
Yes.
Coprin?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Good friend?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We move to our information items and our in, our first information item today is regarding the Oak Park Schools twenty-twenty-one Bond Program Contract Award Recommendation for Construction Management Services, and I believe that goes to Steve. Is that going to Steve, or is that going to Brian Hills? I see a few people on the meeting.
He just unmuted himself.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, we're asking that the board, well, that we approve the construction, the construction manager for the bond issue be awarded to Rockford Construction. Um, and we have on the line today Kevin Donnelly, Ed Bloom from Rockford Construction, Krista, I'm sorry, Krista Donnelly, an ass lane, she's, she's from Rockford Construction to speak on the, uh, on this resolution. Kevin, will you tell them the process we went through, Kevin Donnelly from Plant Moran Crescent?
Sure. Good, good evening, everybody. Kevin Donnelly here with Plant Moran Crescent. Initially, when the team was discussing the procurement of the CM, we identified ten um, firms local to the area that we felt were qualified, um, to execute the work, and we invited them to um, submit promote proposals on, on the CM RFP that we were getting ready to issue. Um, all ten seemed interested at the time. We conducted a, a pre-bid meeting. I had six firms that, um, uh, were at the pre-bid meeting and interested in, in moving forward with the RFP process. Uh, we ended up receiving five bids in total, which is, um, actually very good in today's market. It's a very busy market. So getting five bids was, uh, was a good thing for the, for the program. Um, from there, we, uh, went through a criteria-based selection process for which the team identified key criteria to, um, judge and score the contractors on. Um, three of the five received, uh, what we're gonna call the shortlist to be interviewed. We, uh, conducted a series of, of interviews with three of the contractors. Uh, the team concluded and finalized the criteria basis selection process and determined that Rockford was the highest scoring, um, CM firm, and collectively as a team, we decided to move forward with the recommendation.
Those, uh, those meetings took place over a course of three days. Uh, we did meet, uh, in person with the three firms, and we feel very comfortable that for the bond issue, that Rockford Construction will partner with, uh, Gafari, who is our architect, and they'll partner with us to do a just an amazing job. We, we believe they're an A-plus, uh, construction manager, just like Gafari's an A-plus, uh, architect. And, and with Plant Moran Crescent's help, we did it on a scoring system, so it's, uh, not objective. It, it's based on, on scoring that's been developed over the course of time. So we're asking for you, uh, to consider to approve, uh, them as the construction management service for the entire, uh, bond program.
And did the folks from the construction management firm want to say anything before we go to board questions?
Good evening. This is Ed Bloom with Rockford Construction, uh, project executive, uh, for the education team. We're honored to be selected. We look forward to this partnership with Oak Park School and, uh, very proud to be here tonight. Krista is also joining me as well from Rockford.
All right, thank you for joining us tonight. Do any board members have questions on the information item? Trustee Klein?
Um, looking at the, the bid documents and the different companies, I see that we actually have worked with one of the firms that submitted a bill before, Frank Rewald and Sons. Um, and I was wondering how much that played into the selection process. Um, and if you guys consider that, especially with things, uh, being very stretched thin in the construction industry, that uh, that might be an outsized, you know, if we had a great experience with them last time, perhaps we should go with them again.
I could, I could speak to that. We, uh, each interview was pretty intense. We had a lot of back and forth. And we were, we were honest about what our expectations were. And we went back and forth, and Rewald actually pulled out of the selection process. They asked to be, uh, pull out of that selection process just because they felt like this was maybe gonna be more than they could handle. You know, they're, because of their workload and they have some other lines out there, they, they just respectfully withdrew from, from the, uh, from the, from the selection process.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Okay, trustee corporate and then trustee Alvin.
Well, my question is, of course, um, if awarded, um, when, when do you believe the date will start? And if so, um, when do you, I mean, when the project will begin? And of course, due to COVID, I know a lot of things are behind.
Well, to answer that question is really easy. Um, I think the minute you, if you approve it, um, uh, October twenty-fifth, they'll hit the ground running on October twenty-sixth. So Gafari, the architect, already has design and drawings done, and they're just waiting for the construction manager approval so that they can hand over their drawings and designs to the construction manager for their, to, to estimate and analyze the, uh, the dollars and for us to get an RFP out early, uh, late November, early December, really hopefully late November, so we can get the, hit the ground running on the elementary project. So I think, uh, Ed and Krista can both say, and may I say that Rockford actually was the only, uh, group that asked to do a walkthrough prior to the, uh, the bid finalization. So they've kind of already kind of got some ideas. I know Krista gave some ideas when we met, so, uh, they're already hungry and, and ready to hit the ground running. So I see on October twenty-sixth, it's if the board approves on the twenty-fifth, that they'll, 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 they'll be going to action right away.
Is it possible to, um, to, um, oh, I'm sorry, the, the RA, did you say RAP?
RFP.
Oh, RFP. Okay.
Request for proposal.
Yeah, request the, yeah, right. Thanks. I knew that last week. It's a whole week now. Thank you. That was it.
Trustee Alvin?
Yes, I just want to confirm that these, all these were apples-to-apples uh, comparisons, just looking at some of the proposed fees, pretty disparate in number. So I just wanted to make sure these were all apples-to-apples in terms of, uh, the estimates from each of, of the companies.
Kevin, you want to speak to that?
Sure. Um, well, you can see that we have two firms that are, that are obvious outliers. We have one on the high end and one certainly on the low end, and I can say from a construction manager perspective, they're all in costs. Typically, in the market, we're seeing ranges from eight to ten percent. Um, in today's market, some of them even a little bit north of ten percent. So when we see anything substantially lower than that or higher than that, we know that they didn't evaluate things like we wanted them to within the RFP. Um, for example, Braun Construction Group at thirty-seven thousand dollars for pre-construction whereby other firms are anywhere from hundred and eighty to four hundred thousand dollars. So that's obviously through a major red flag, so um, they didn't follow the RFP, and in many ways, they were, they were disqualified because their pricing just wasn't even in market for consideration. Um, the same thing with Saxon Construction, but on, on the high end. Um, and as you can see, the three firms, uh, after we did go through the, the criteria-based selection, the three firms that were selected for shortlisted interviews happen to be within what we would feel would be normal market, um, normal market fees of anywhere from eight point five to ten point six percent.
Great. And thank you. Any other questions from the board? So I did have a chance to look through, um, the documents and the excellent proposal that was submitted by Rockford, and I would encourage my colleagues on the board to, um, take the opportunity over the next couple of weeks to read it. It's a long document. It's very detailed, but it's very, very well done. And I, first of all, I want to just take notice of the fact that Rockford makes a very, um, speaks towards the end of the proposal in great detail about the work that they do in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and making sure that in hiring contractors and subcontractors and in the, uh, the way that things are managed, that it reflects the values that are very important to this district or part of our, um, key values. So I want to make notice of that as well. One thing that was in the document as well that I noticed, and it was brought up again tonight by several students and public comments, and it's something that trustee Goodfriend has always been, um, very vocal about for our district is the leaks in the roof in the high school. And I know that Rockford noticed that when they were walking through. The students mentioned it today. Um, do we know if those areas are areas that were um, part of the previous roofing, um, repairs, and are those covered under warranty? Or are those areas that are new areas of concern that would have to be addressed? Or are those areas that are new areas of concern that would have to be addressed under the bond? Under the current.
Yeah, to answer that, President Hoda, they are covered under, under the warranty. Every time it rains, I call Dura Last and we get them out and then I've actually gone to where the head custodian now has to put an X on the ceiling tile and a date so that, because you know the, the, if you know anything about roofing contractors, they don't come out in the rain. And so they always wonder, well, was that a leak from now? So we have gone to marking the ceiling tiles so that we know. And I called Dura Last to call in a warranty, but a lot of times they're not under warranty, but we still have them repaired anyway, because like for example, around Fourth of July, we'll get burn holes through the uh roofing membrane from the fireworks. Those aren't covered under the warranty. So, but we still have them repaired. No matter what, every time they come out, they repair everything we find, but it just continues, it's continuing on. You know, so if somebody flicks a lit cigarette, let's say on the roof, it'll burn a hole through the roof, then that creates a leak. So we're ad- we're adamantly trying to the district watertight. I, I, I spend a lot of time calling Dura Last, filing warranty claims to make sure we can try to get these rooms watertight. We've also, just so you know, we, I just had all the roof sumps, which are the drains that are in the middle of the roof and all the gutters cleaned to wick away the water off the roofs so that it doesn't pond on the roofs, which then helps us to cut down on the leak. So we're, we're adamantly. I want the, I want the whole district to be watertight and I, I'm going to work until it is. But it, it's a work in progress. Every time it rains, we come up with some more leaks, we deal with those leaks. So I don't want people to think we're not trying to do it because I'm trying to get those leaks solved. I, I don't like wet ceiling tiles. I don't like leaks.
All right, any other questions from members of the board? Trustee Goodfriend?
Um, in regards to the, yes, the roof was fixed, okay, and it was a new roof that was put on there. Is that a part of the leaking in the new partial part of the cafeteria, the, the addition, or is it in the main uh part of the cafeteria?
Uh, it's in the main part of the cafeteria. It's not in the new addition part. It's in the main part and it's in the hallway outside of the cafeteria as well. We're just experiencing a lot of, um, I, you know, I don't know why, why the roof is failing, but I've actually brought that to Dura Last's attention to make sure, you know, that we get our warranty life out of that. So uh you know, we, we are, we also are, as you know, uh, we're looking at to see you know, what, what we need to do in the future to continue to get that, that roof watertight, but it is still under warranty for about, yeah, three more years.
That's right.
Yes.
The other part of it is, um, the company, the construction company that subcontracted this, uh we should have the, we, I, I know we do have the name of the company that did the actual work, not Dura Last, but the company that did the work. And that was a part of that warranty uh that, that it would, it be the right thing to do and that we approved of it at the time. But if we're still having these uh situations and uh like it was at the planetarium roofing as well, oh, I don't see why we have not made contact with the contractor and I have the name. We worked very carefully and closely with them. Mr. Hoda knows that as well. Um uh, they're an honorable construction company and, and the person that did all this, they're, that's under warranty. I know what Dura Last does, but it has to be the application, the persons with the application. And I don't know that you've um been aware of the name of the company.
Well.
All right.
Can I, can I just answer that really? Dura Last makes me call their service department because it's a Dura Last warranty. And then they pick a company that's a Dura Last uh provider. I don't get a choice. I mean, this time it could be a company like Brutal Roofing over on Capitol Street. They, they're a Dura Last uh company, but I don't get them all the time because I, I would, I would love to have them because they do a good job. But it's, I have to file the claim through Dura Last Service Department and then they send out uh whoever they, they, they send out is who that, who we have to have.
All right, are there any other questions on this information item? Um, I see there's an information item B that looks like it's the same as information item A. Is that a separate item or are we okay to move on?
I think. That's Ms. Jones.
Okay, so thank you very much. We look forward to being able to further review that and um for it to come for a vote at our next meeting in two weeks. And that brings us to our closed session. So we are going, the board is now going to adjourn from this open session. We're gonna go into a separate room for the closed session. Uh, board members, you were provided with a separate link for a Zoom. And then once that closed session is completed, we will return back here to this location and this Zoom room to uh finish out the meeting. So we are adjourned at seven fifty-nine.
Well, he's still on mute, so.
Well, they're all on mute. Um, the, the microphone should be picking it up, but I can't hear any, can't hear anything.
President Hoda, are you talking? Are you speaking?
He is speaking, but we can't hear him. I can see his lips moving.
Okay, can those out there?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there you go.
I can hear you. Yep.
Okay, can those out there in Zoom land hear me now?
Well, we can.
We can.
All right.
Can he not hear us?
Calling this meeting back into open session at ten nineteen. Myself, trustee corporate are present in person. Trustee Alvin and trustee Smith are present on Zoom. That constitutes a quorum. Are there any additional comments um from the community? You can unmute yourself or type. I can't, no, I can't hear those in the community. If you have additional comments, you can type it in the chat, please.
Can, you can't hear us? No, you can't hear us.
He can't hear us. Let's just type so we can get this over with.
Okay, are there any additional comments from the board? And then anything additional from the administration? Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So mo- there's a motion to adjourn. Is there any, any objection? I'll ask for unanimous consent. With no objection, this meeting is adjourned at ten twenty PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.